We now call the city council regular meeting to order for October the fourteenth, six P M. Please rise for invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Father, we thank you for this evening. Lord, we just thank you for sparing us from the worst of the storm, Lord. We ask that you will be with those, Lord, that are still suffering from the effects of the storm, Father. Oh, we ask that the infrastructure be built back quick, Father. We ask that you grant us wisdom, Lord, to make the right decisions tonight, Father, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. Madam Clerk, feel please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Councilmember McGuire here. Councilmember McCure here. Councilmember Taylor here. Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Here.
Mayor Anderson.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, up first would be the minutes from the city council special meeting from September the fourteenth. I'll be looking for a motion.
Make a motion to approve the.
Minutes.
I'm sorry, the minutes or the whole consent agenda?
Good point.
Yes, I like that.
All right, we have the consent agendas, be items four through eight. Anyone, is there any items the council wishes to remove?
Um, I just have a question about number eight.
Okay. Go ahead.
Um. Did, did I see the on, in the minutes that we still have mark on the, the bank accounts?
Yes, it takes two signatures to withdraw any money from the bank account and with the process with the signature cards. I just waited until Danielle came on board.
Okay. Okay.
Any other questions? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? So we items four through eight.
So move.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Last call for questions.
I don't have any questions, just one comment on number seven that, and y'all probably have it in the file, but the Kimley Horn Insurance, the one we have expired in twenty twenty. So if we don't have a new copy of that, I'm sure you probably do.
I can look into it, but if not, I'll make a request for it.
Okay.
Okay.
Was it twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one?
It expired in twenty twenty.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next up, this will be item number nine. This will be the first reading of ordinance number twelve dash twenty twenty-four.
So the city of Avon Park, Florida, providing adoption of code changes to code section ninety-eight dash seventy-six to increase potable water facility capacity fees. Providing for adoption of code changes to section ninety-eight dash seventy-seven of the Avon Park Code of Ordinances, correcting grammatical errors, increasing potable water customer usage rates and adding fire protection water customer usage rates based on fire line size, providing for adoption of code changes in section ninety-eight dash two thirty-eight of the Avon Park Code of Ordinances, increasing wastewater customer usage charges and restructuring wastewater rates, providing for codification, reveal conflicting codes, ordinances and resolutions, providing for severability, scribblers errors, and providing effective date.
All right, Jason, are you going to be presenting?
Yes, this is just put into code, everything that we agreed upon with the exception in the two budget meetings that we had. So um we have, the difference was a pretreated industrial waste went from eleven cents to seven cents a gallon. That was the only difference based off of, off of uh the conversations that we had in the presentations. That was the difference. So everything else was the same, what was uh agreed upon. The first one, we, we kind of went through it and you, you heard what we had to say, then we just kind of refined it based off the conversations that we had, and then it was presented in more of a a, a smaller version, and that was approved. And then let's just put it into, into code form. So instead of resolution, which those are sometimes hard to review, it's online, it's easily, easily read. And every, it's, everything's out there for everyone to see.
Okay. You can see there's quite a bit of uh language in here. Discussing the uh raising of the capacity fees and the connection fees for everything across the board. Any comments on any of that or questions?
I have no questions.
Go ahead.
I had none.
Oh. All right, we do have one sign up. Mister Roger Garganus. We're having it right now.
Roger Garganus, I live at thirteen fifteen North Lake Isis Drive, city of Avon Park. Um. We had had some discussion, and I'd like first to get some clarification.
Oh.
You brought down the house, Roger.
Man. Generator? No?
Nope. We don't have a generator.
Looks like the lights are on in the hallway.
Yeah, the lights are on in the hallway. We should have electricity in here. We go.
That was exciting.
Um.
Do you have your recorder on? Yep.
Okay, that fee um is what number? Where did that number come from and when did it start? You know, we're just, like I'm saying, was already approved, been there, and I don't, you know, it just kind of doesn't seem fair to all of a sudden you're doing something that's already been approved by the city, taken care of by the city, and boom, we're doing third phase. And then let's just say hypothetically fifty thousand dollars is what they want to add to the development cost. Which uh, like I said, has been approved for years, and I would think it would be covered.
Did you ever enter into a contract with the city with regard to development?
Uh, Chad, you honestly, I don't know, Chad. It's, it's.
Yeah, so if you don't.
Um, so, so honestly, it was started in ninety-five. It would start with World Gospel Missions, transferred to uh Growing Tree Foundation in oh eight. We bought in twenty sixteen. Um, there was fifty-five houses already in there. Like I said, there's four phases. Um, this year, there was additional thirty lots that were already there, sold to Southern Homes, of which they've built about twenty-four houses, I think, already. Um, we're looking to add another twenty-four houses in the Phase Three, which is, is all implanted lots. If you look out there on the property provider site with individual addresses and all that. So as far as development agreement, I don't know what was signed originally, honestly.
And the speaker is Chad Pritchett?
Chad Pritchett, fifteen fifteen Isis Lake Drive, Avon Park.
So the capacity fees or impact fees are whatever they are the day you get your C O. And uh, we normally reserve, require that you reserve the capacity, so it's available for you anyway, and you pay some capacity fees up at that time, but the contract at that point would say that, you know, they are with, whatever they are when they, when you get your C O, because I mean ninety-five to two thousand twenty-four, you know, do you spend, are you paying, are you paying the same amount for lumber or anything else? No, I mean, it's, 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 everything goes up. So if you're going to wait, then you're going to pay more.
Right, and then, and I think that's part of the question, and maybe again, we're both confused, but is it a, is it a tap fee at the time you build a house?
That is totally, totally something different. Tap fees basically tapping the line, the cost of tapping a line, that sometimes includes, since misnomer, it sometime includes the, the line that runs up to your meter. And then you're, you're responsible for the, 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 from the meter to the house as a side, and that doesn't have anything to do with us, but um uh the tap fee doesn't lock you into anything really, just pays for the cost of that tap and the meter and um uh.
When is the capacity fee typically paid, Jerry?
Uh, it's usually paid when you reserve capacity, because if, if, but if it's a small development, they may be willing to take the risk. But we generally encourage people to reserve capacity fees, because if you don't reserve them, they're not yours. I mean, right now, we're running out of capacity in some areas, and so, I mean, conceivably, you could actually not finish your homes in time to not have capacity if you don't reserve, reserve it. So we don't ever guarantee that it's there, just because you, you, you know, pay a tap fee for the tap of the line.
So Jerry, would the capacity fee typically be paid whenever they do the developer agreement?
Typically, that's how it's done. That's how we require an orphan to reserve the capacity, but they don't reserve the capacity. It is whatever it is on the date that they get a C O.
So this, this typically need, this needs two readings. So if they so chose to execute their developer agreement before the next reading, the old rates would apply. Is that correct?
Well, no, it would still, the agreements always say, i- if, you know, if it is whatever it is when you've C O um, is, is um received. So if it passes and they don't finish it before that, then it will be whatever it is at that point, because that's what we build in, because otherwise somebody could sit on the contract for five, ten years and say, okay, I'm ready to build now, and everything's cost more, you know, we, the capacity itself costs probably for ninety-five, probably costs twice as much.
Yeah.
Now, as it did.
Yeah, I'm just misunderstanding, because you're saying when the C O is received, and I, I'm feeling like, so if I put my road water and sewer lines in, let's say in the next three months.
Yeah.
Then there's no C O involved with that.
No. C O is on the house.
I get it. And, and my point is, so, so how would I be, how would I be responsible for capacity fee? When you keep saying when the C O is issued.
Capacity is for what your homes use, or whatever it is, a business or uh school, or whatever it is, whatever that, that capacity requirement is.
Yeah.
For that particular usage, that's what the capacity fee is based on. We have a study that's done by um, um, experts in that area that, that produce that, you know, accounting experts. And, and they, they develop that based on what we need to receive in order to be made whole as to the cost of the plant.
Gotcha. Can I ask this question? I understand what you're saying, but is this something that boom, just all of a sudden going to happen? Don't you have to, doesn't it have to be ran through a channel in order to um get approval?
It's being run through the channel right now.
Two readings.
We're, we have an ordinance.
Approved tonight, it would be approved again at the next, our next meeting.
But I, I'm still back to, so I want to go develop my subdivision, my next leg of the subdivision, the next ninety days, right? And and I now have twenty-four lots that, that are up to be developed. When do I write you a check for that capacity fee?
Well, either, either if you want to reserve it and make sure that you have it by the time you finish your, your uh uh, your, your buildings, because right now, it's, you know, um, I don't know how much you have left over, but if we got a huge subdivision come in and then they reserve the capacity, you'd be without capacity. So if somebody, somebody used up all, if somebody reserved all your capacity, the capacity left at our plant, which is not impossible, then you would be left with nothing, and you could finish the homes and not be able to connect them until we, until we were able to increase the capacity.
City then, if, if I just, what if I just owned a lot in the city? I could, I could call and you'd say, well, I don't have capacity for you?
Well, yeah, it doesn't matter whether you own a lot in the city.
Well, I get it, but that's what I'm saying. That, that's the same thing you're presenting. I own a lot on Winthrop Street, and I want to build a house, and I call to go build a house, and I say, hey, guys, I'm, I'm ready to pull my permit, and you say, sorry, yeah, we don't have water and sewer for you. You're telling me that's, that's a real option?
For, for a single family home, one single family home, it's pretty unusual for us not to have that kind of small amount. It's a, it's a very small amount, but we go under moratorium when we reach eighty percent of our capacity and, and uh, go ahead, uh, Jason.
Yeah, so they, they answered one of the questions that you had. There has been an existence, the capacity fee, it's been there, it's getting raised. So um, so you, we were here, I believe, three months ago, when we passed uh, we had a development agreement for Grand Oaks. So they came in and they paid and they reserved, they paid their capacity fees. They, they cut a check to the city. The development agreement was finalized, that check came to the city. So you, you're only wanting twenty home. We have capacity for twenty homes that's within the city at this time. We do have that capacity. So uh, to the, to the mayor's point, I mean, possibly, I understand you're talking about C E O, but we just did it with Grand Oaks. So if there was a reason that, or, you know, maybe that can get extended where you have it set up twenty, twenty homes and you pay the capacity fee of I don't, you know, I don't know if it's the current rate or it's going to be what's the adopted rate, let's leave that to, to our council, but um that's where it is. It's not something that just came into existence. And on this project, all the meter setting fee, the meter fees, like the, the tapping fees, this project's going to be required to run their own meters and sewer laterals and everything as well. So that's going to be into the agreement. We're not, the city's not going to do that for your project. That's going to be on the developer to, to do that, the same, same way we're doing for the rest of the developments.
So there's no tap, tap fee for this purpose. You're simply, they're simply buying the meter from the city.
Exactly. Yeah. No, we're, no, we're going to put in the meter. We'll put in the meter, and we'll put uh, maybe the meter box as well, but they're going to run the line and have everything with the corporation stop and just, if you ever, if you seen Grand Oak, same thing, the water line comes out, sewer laterals there with the clean out, and then after that, you know, that's, that's done.
So there is no tap fee going forward. It's a, you're buying the meter.
Well, it works eighteen to twenty-five hundred, that's going away.
Correct.
It's, you are, it's, it's up to the city, it's up to the public works department. If we decide we're going to, this, and some of those fees are built in, that it's in our interest, say, we want to, we don't have anything there, they're well caught up on their work, and we decide we're going to, we're going to do the install. But this would be for our single house, not really going and doing a development, and we're out there doing that. Developments, that's going to be on the contractors, that's going to have to be done with our specifications and everything else, and we will inspect to make sure that it's done properly up to the clean out. After that, that's going to be uh plumbing uh within the building department to inspect. But that's what that is. On sewer, it can range nine hundred to nine hundred thousand to a million gallons per day, but we have plenty of divi- um.
It's going to be eighty percent, eighty, sixty percent?
Right now, we're, we're at seventy, but we've got people that have reserved and requested letters that put us over, but put us right at where our capacity is. So there's developers that have been in uh communication with the city, wanting to develop, as we, we keep a running count of that.
Well, when the plant actually gets to ninety percent, then we are on, or moratorium at that point, because the state puts us on moratorium.
Jason, I have a question for you, but that basically if we don't increase these rates, then we won't be able to build and extend and increase our capacity, and then we'll run out of capacity sooner than, than we would want to, because we don't want to run out of capacity, correct?
Yes, F, the F R W A, they, they did a, a study, and we, it came to the council a couple of years ago, and that, that basically stated, this is where your rates could be. They gave two options. We kind of took the middle point of the options that they gave us, and that's where we went with, with the rates. So that's what came in front of you today for the, for the capacity fees. And yes, that will help us build what we need to, not just with sewer, but for all the fifty-five miles of two-inch line and three and four-inch additional five miles and galvanized and all those other projects that we have, that's what this capacity, that the money that's there, that's what that's going to go into.
So when we get to there now, where will this money come from to build a, add on to the plant? Or build a new, or build a new plant? Is that going to be a grant? Is that going to be, are we just going to shut that? Because we can't.
It would be a combination of multiple pots of money, so money that we have in reserves, money that's set aside for capital improvements, money that we could get from grants, absolutely, so different.
We're talking about millions of dollars.
Yeah.
Nineteen, tens of billions of dollars.
Well, that's why I'm asking the question, because you just don't jump out there and get that right.
We're, we're never going to collect enough of these fees to pay for that unless you got some sort of a monumentally huge development that was tens of thousands of homes. But what they're saying is that it's not going to come just from that, it'll have to come from several sources. That's just simply helping the cause. So, I mean, for them in particular, in their situation with this not passed yet, I guess the real question, if I was them, I would have is, is uh, you know, the current capacity fee is twenty-three hundred dollars roughly, if my math is correct. We're talking about raising it to forty-eight, I think forty-eight ninety. So what do they have to do to finalize their agreement to get locked in at a lower rate, I guess?
I believe you guys were already provided the agreement, right?
Well, you provided us a template.
Yeah, so that, yeah, yeah, so you just go off of that, and then what, based off of what you guys are going to have over there, and it's the same thing, and then the, the number of homes and that you're proposing that has a little table that says the size of the homes, and that way we can do the, the E R C with the calculations that we, that we use for the city. And I can discuss further, and if, if y'all want to, that, you know, gain, have a meeting and if you need assistance with that agreement. It's going to come back to us, so it's going to with uh, the attorney and myself and the utilities manager, we'll just make sure everything's, but this is going to be like the third one we've done, so we're.
And, and we need a, a new development agreement, even though it's an existing development?
In order for the city.
It, the development agreement is for what you're requesting now. You're requesting additional capacity. We generally enter those, I mean, we can't make you do it. You know, if you don't want to, then, then, but you're taking a risk that somebody else comes in and says, you know.
They, I mean, you have, it's good to have the development agreement in place, because that spells out what the responsibilities of the city are and what the responsibilities of the, the, the community is. So that just basically establishes that, and it's not too, not too difficult. We should be able to get through it and have it done pretty quick.
So it looks like, you know, the, the rates are lower now. One, some way, somehow, the rates are going up in the future. So if I'm y'all, I'm going to get it done in the next two weeks.
Well, if, yeah, I mean, if, if we can get that level of participation, I mean, we, we can move on our end, but I don't know.
The staff is going to be right there to get their part done, right?
Yes.
I have a question there for J, um, Jason. Jason, I heard you say um, some of the builders has reserved the capacity. What does that mean? Have they paid?
No, it's, they, they requested, they requested um, they, it's, it's kind of a, we will serve, but nothing is finalized until we receive payment, and there's an agreement in place. So it's just kind of like, yes, uh, they plan on doing it, we give it to them, because they need a letter from us whenever they're going through their application process for whatever uh, financial obligations, whatever they're the person that's financing, the company is financing the, the development, so that's just a part of the process.
Also, land, land planning as well, in a concurrency.
And because they haven't paid, we really don't know what our capacity is.
No, we know, we know what our capacity is, where.
You don't know what our future.
Future development.
Well, yeah, I mean, we, we kind of calculated it out based off of the numbers we have, and we're using real, real numbers that from, based off of the usage within the city. So we took the numbers of, of homes and divided it by how much we're selling, and we got a number there. Um. We don't. Let me see here, the, the, the builders that, if they're not moving forward, and we see that there's a delay in the talks, and they are to kind of they haven't been like proactive in the process, then someone else comes forward and is ready to do something, then we will end up it's, say, hey, yeah, you have a chance, because these other people aren't doing anything, the other group isn't doing anything. And then uh, I am trying to give priority to whoever's in the city um, for, for development, rather than, and uh developers that are outside the city. So like, this one's inside the city, and we want to try to give them priority when it comes to reserving capacity.
And also, let me point out that, you know, we, the actual flow at the plant, when it reaches ninety percent of your capacity, then we're on, on moratorium, but at eighty percent, we have to actually start planning for, for construction and start coughing, coughing up funds to, to build the plant that's going to give us whatever we need.
And we're already doing that.
Give me a hypothetical, like, it's like, I have something in my brain. You're saying you're at about seventy percent? No?
No. No, I said, it's fit one point five million gallons. We roughly, we, we fluctuate between nine hundred thousand and one million gallons.
Sixties to sixty-five percent.
Yeah.
When you figure a three-bedroom, two-bath house, give me a number, is that going to hold another twenty thousand houses, ten thousand?
I, I can't, I mean.
So your equivalent residential connection is about two hundred and fifty gallons a day. So you could do the math from there, and that's on a three-bedroom.
Each single family home. So it's like, it, even if you had a clubhouse, it would still be based on what single-family home uses. So if it's like, is your clubhouse two hundred, two-point-five single-family homes worth the capacity? So everything has capacity. It's all based on the equivalent residential connections.
It's roughly uh, two thousand homes.
Two.
Roughly two thousand, and two thousand homes.
You have room for another two thousand homes, is that what?
Without adding any commercial or anything like that.
And, and that's.
And that's at a hundred percent capacity. So by ninety, we're already at a moratorium.
Yeah, and at eighty percent, you need to, you, you got to stop or you got to start building.
So we've got two major developments. One of them's over five hundred homes that's supposed to be happening very, very soon, and then there's, I think, a smaller one of a few hundred homes. And then there was a great big one that was over a thousand. So if all three of those happen in the next few years, we're under moratorium until we get an expansion.
But may, may, or may not happen. That's, that's probably pretty optimistic.
Right. You don't build wastewater plant for like four or five years, because it takes at least a year, year and a half, two, two years of, to permit it. And uh, that's if you have plans done, so.
Are those tracks even in the city, though, that you're talking about?
Um, two of them are. Yeah, one of them's there on Memorial, uh, behind that Memorial School.
But uh, we, we require that they agree to annex in, and um, I think we probably should have modify that even to say, if, if they're not going to be able to annex in within ten years, you shouldn't really provide capacity to them at this point, that, my perspective, because I think that ultimately the um, the legislature is going to pass that bill that says that anybody outside your city limits going to pay the same amount as people inside the city limits. As foolish as I think that is, I think it's going to ultimately pass.
These new, new rates are based on what?
The, the study that was done.
So the capacity fees are based on a study that was done in September of twenty twenty by the Florida Rural Water Association. And just as an example, what Jason was talking about, the two different fees for sewer, they recommended either somewhere between nineteen hundred and ninety, depending on the, how they calculated it. Either they could have calculated based on remaining life or completely rebuilding a new plant, that's the two calculations. One was nineteen hundred and ninety dollars, the other was four thousand and twenty. So it sounds like uh, the discussions at council, they split the difference and made it three thousand and five. And it's the same type of example for the water connection. I just gave you the sewer one.
Just one question, uh, Jason or Danielle. One portion of it um, talks about fire protection, and it's um any existing connections prior to October first. Is that only for the fire portion, and everything else doesn't take into effect until we have the two readings?
Can you tell me which page you're on exactly?
Uh, fifty-six.
Is there a number at the bottom, like five of seven?
Seven.
Oh, thank you.
Good. Sure. No, that's the bulk waste.
You're talking about category or paragraph B, item three?
Yes. Right before exhibit A, the monthly water usage rates.
Joseph Sliva, utility manager. Um, the fire, the fire protection is um, a fee for a lifetime guarantee for water to that service. Uh, there's currently a different um equation they use is per sprinkler head, but um just based off the need of the water, that's why we've implemented the other fee.
But is that the only portion that backdates to October first is my question, mainly for them, if they're wanting to try to get it in before this thing gets red twice?
It would be per sprinkler head, as far as fire system goes.
But does the capacity fees, do they go back to the October first date, I guess is my question?
I don't believe there's a capacity fee.
You didn't adjust the fifteenth uh, uh, rate, you just did the one-time fee, correct?
Yes.
Sorry, he didn't, he didn't, he just suggested the one-time fee, not the first sprinkler, that was never adjusted. So it's in, it's in what the, what the rate is, is what the, what the rate.
Yeah, my question isn't even about the fire stuff. My question is, because they're, I'm assuming, want to get their stuff in before this thing goes up. So that October first date, does that only apply to the firehead rate?
Yeah, they're not, they're not going to have any fire sprinklers in where they're at. They're just going to have a regular connects, a regular household.
So if they, if they got their stuff in before we read this and agree to this thing twice, then they're still good with the old rates?
Yes, and, and, and that's uh, the fire sprinklers for, for businesses that need, require fire sprinklers and, instead of the fire hydrants outside.
Is there a reason why we had to go back to October first for that one, rather than just going with the second reading?
I don't believe we ever changed that. I don't think we changed that number. I don't recall us changing. We just did the one-time, one-time fee, so that was in there.
I think they were anticipating that this would be finalized before October first is why that date is chosen.
So all of the dates, this thing does not come into effect until we pass it twice?
Correct.
Okay.
Now, here's one more question. The fee, I think, I understood you here, is basically going to. The fee, I think, is basically going to double.
Just over double, yeah. From that study that she mentioned.
The, the Florida Water Study.
And those are twenty twenty rates. So I imagine if we had the study done now, it's still, it would be a lot more expensive.
It, it definitely would because it changes every year. And, um, you selected a mid, a low level before. And then, um, he just selected mid level of what they recommended. It's not even near the, the high level that they recommended that you could charge.
So when is the city due again for another study?
It's typically every five years.
And that one was done last year or this year?
Twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty.
Just now being adopted. So I would, I would recommend since we're adopting it now, we start the clock again and then go forward five years for the next study.
You probably ought to try, start contacting them now because it'll take you a year to be seen. It takes, takes them about a year to get to you.
Is it my understanding that the city, i- i- if we can get it done in the next month or so, then we would go in under the old rate system. And we say get it done, that means sign the.
Developer agreement.
Developer agreement.
And write a check.
Everybody the same. Okay.
They have to write the check.
Well, it's going to be passed in two weeks.
I don't think they said in a month or two. I think it said October, about October first.
Two week, the next meeting is two weeks.
Yeah, they, they would have to have the developer agreement signed, completed and a check written to the city for the capacity. Is that correct?
That is correct. Uh, your next meeting's the twenty eighth of this month. And it's my understanding the development agreement would have to come before the council for improvement. I mean, you could get creative. I would recommend agendizing them before the second reading. If you.
Sure.
Want them to pay the lower rates, you could make that argument.
Sure. I mean, is it paramount that we pass it at our next meeting?
The, the ordinance?
It'll, it'll be delayed substantially then if you don't because the, you have to notice the date that you're going to be.
Okay.
Passing this in, in, in the bills and the bills, the next billing won't come out probably what, couple of weeks? So then, once they go out, then, then you can have the next meeting and that, that, so you're probably talking about the end of November before you can get it passed.
So if you guys can get everything done, we'll put you on the agenda before the passing of this and everything will be fine at the old rates.
Um, may I have a question for Jason? Jason, is there any other builders that find themselves here?
These are the.
That you know of?
That I haven't, these are the only ones that showed up tonight. So I, I haven't, um, not that I know of.
Sure.
I mean, there's plenty of builders within the city. I just, it's the only ones that showed up.
No, I mean, are there other builders in the city that find themselves, well, they don't even know it yet, that they're going to end up like them?
Well, if they're in the city, they know about it because it was on their bill.
So do they have the option of, you know, we do the payment plans and things like that? Did they have that option? If they sign the builder's agreement and then. So if they can't come up with it in two weeks, then they could, we could give them an extent or not an extension, but a payment agreement?
Yes, we can do that.
So then you also have that as an option to not having to pay it all upfront.
That's good. We appreciate that.
But again, that would have to be approved by council. So it has to be ready for the agenda. So.
Wow.
And, and it has to be, it has, the contract has to be approved before the reading or the second reading of the ordinance.
Yeah.
Yeah, but in line, and once you pass it, it's law. Because, uh, you know, unless you want to make it effective, a different date, which had, case we'd have to change the ordinance.
Well, I mean, I don't really think it's that big of a deal if we did wait until November, just because, like Bernice was saying, there's probably a lot of people out there that don't know that this is taking effect. I mean, I, I get it that people should, but not everybody pays attention to everything that comes out of City Hall.
Perhaps they should be notified.
So we only have so many ways of notifying them. The fact that we're talking about it here tonight, I'm sure there will be an article about it. I'm sure, you know, word will get out, but. Yeah. Well.
Yeah, we're, we're not, you were provided us just with something you used for somebody else, which we could have probably pulled from public record. I mean, we're going to actually, I guess, have our attorney draft it is in, has to come.
Your attorney doesn't draft it. He just reviews it after we draft it.
Well, that is not what I was told and that's not what I was given.
Well, he doesn't draft the, the agreement. We draft it here.
There's one that's already been made, very, very similar to your project. You just put the number of homes, the size of the, the size of the units in the table. It's already there, same thing, same wording across the board. Just as you, you put to the table that we spoke about, he requires a five thousand dollar deposit for his services. It's a deposit, goes in, it usually takes me to review it. About an hour. That's it.
But when I say draft, so you, you want me to take that agreement then and change the wording or is that what you do?
No, that's what we do. If you're ready to start the agreement, we just sent it to you for the informational purposes. But if you're ready to start, you need to apply with, with the, um, you have an application form still, right?
Yeah, um, because they're, because they were going through, I think they were still through the review process. Is that accurate, Joe? Yes.
Yes.
So that there's, I think they're still in the, in the review process.
Yeah, so we've submitted to the city. They had thirty days to respond. We didn't, I don't think we got an official written response. You did send me the sample, let's say, development agreement. Um, and we're about two weeks out from that thirty days now. And so we would be looking for the city's final sign off and then we send it to Swift Mud and then we can build our roads, is my understanding.
Yeah, because when they, when they were talking about it, um, this is before the storm. So there were concerns with the size of the pipes, making sure that we had the fire flow. So we sent a, a team out there to check the fire flow. They were good with the fire flow and everything was fine. We've just been in, this past week's been hurricane mode. Uh, we haven't been focusing on your agreement.
I get it. I understand, but I'm getting two different answers from him and from you. You're saying what you gave me a sample and that's what I cross out and bring back to you. And he said he drafts the agreement.
Right. So here is, the, the agreement that's in place, that's already, it's a template. Send it over to you. You changed the wording. I don't know what it's called, uh, whatever, what's the name, what's the name of the development?
Uh, Oaks Village.
Oaks Village, Oaks Village Inc., whatever it is, you fill that out. And then you, what you're planning on doing, and then you put the table. And that, based off that table, it, it has everything. We go ahead and we do the calculation. We'll put the impact fee and we'll do everything else in there. And then I'll type it up, but you need to give me the name of the, the name of the unit, the, the place, that, that, basically the header. It's in the, it's in the first paragraph. And then once you get that back over to me and it comes over to the attorney, because that's what he's looking at to make sure that's all legal, that you can, are even allowed to enter into the agreement. But I can't, that, that's, you, you start it. I give you, I gave you a template. You give that to me. I, I plug in the specifics. But you need to give me how many units and then it goes over and he reviews it and he's really fast with the reviews. So that's, it's not a long process.
Yeah, that's fine. It's just, it's a little different than what was proposed to me because you told me specifically, I need to have my attorney draft that agreement with this template is. And he's telling me that he drafts the agreement. So I can tonight mark it up, put Oaks Village Inc., Oaks Village HOA, whatever we need to do in twenty-four units and hand it back to you. If that's all I need to do.
You need to write twenty-four units, whether it's twen- twelve, two, two bedroom, two baths, eleven so and so. You need to have that table, get that back over. Exactly. That's, that's what you need to do.
And then I would just go back to the council, back to what Garrett said. I mean, you, given this circumstance, could you work with us? I mean, is it imperative that you do it tonight? Because I, inevitably, the wheels don't turn as quickly as we would like them to.
Okay. So what's the ramifications for postponing it, uh, until next month? For the, the second reading until next month?
Yeah, I'd go to the, the, um, we have to have it published on your, um, uh, bills. And the bills come out when?
We have several routes. So that's basically weekly that they go out. So we would have to just change the.
It'd take you a month then. It'd take you a month to get, get it done. So another month before we can send it out.
We'll have one meeting next month. So you would have to postpone it to December.
Yeah. Probably go to December.
January one.
Yeah, it's, once you, once you pass, it'll be January effective. Okay.
But what does the council want to do? Do they want to postpone or do they want to go ahead with it?
So it would go postpone until December or January?
Effective date, January, we would have a meeting about it in December.
Correct. Is that enough time?
I, I hope it is. I mean, we're going to do everything in our power. I'm going to do what he said and he'll have it back tomorrow. If that's, if that's all it entails. I mean, we're going to give you a name. We're going to give you a number of units. I can't perfectly predict whether it can be three bedroom or two bedroom, but we can split the difference and say we'll have twelve each and.
Well, you can always reserve over capacity. You can't reserve under capacity, so.
No, you have to, you have to say what you're doing. This, this, what the capacity, because you, because you need to, you need to have that. You need to have that.
How would you know that for sure at this point?
That's the only way we can bill you. If, you know, based on the capacity is what you're building. If you don't know what you're going to build, then we, we can't do it.
We're not building. We're just, we're just developing the lots.
But if you reserve for two bedroom and it ends up as a one, I don't think that the city would be offended by that because the capacity's there, the fee's been paid.
We're not going to refund it though.
Right, right.
Right, so.
I would just err on the side of caution is all I'm telling you.
Okay.
So is there no way to go ahead and do the readings and just put an effective date, not until whenever we want it to take into effect rather than having to do the readings again?
I don't know.
It would be the same thing or you had to change, you'd have to change the effective date on the ordinance.
Then you would still have to, then you would have to renotice it and re-vote again, or it's just we can still approve, do the two readings?
In other words, can we change the effective date tonight?
Yeah, I don't see why you couldn't change the effective date to a different date if you want to do that.
Okay. What effective date would the council like?
May I throw out another option?
Please.
Can we just delete the capacity fees for tonight and have the rest of it approved? And move forward on the regular schedule and then split out these capacity fees and bring back, uh, a separate one for those.
There's, there's a lot of other parts of this where they're actually bleeding money with regard to usage rates.
So Jerry, do you see a problem doing what she suggested?
I don't see a problem with that.
We would just have to remove the words capacity fees out of the ordinance?
Yeah, you'd have to receive, re- uh, remove that whole section regarding capacity fees.
Okay. Is, is the council opposed to doing that?
I'm not opposed to them.
Okay, so. We'll so move to, um, approve the ordinance. Removing the section about capacity fees.
Ninety-eight dash, um, two thirty-six, is that? And, um, water capacity fees is, um.
Ninety-eight dash seventy-seven.
Seventy-six.
Seventy-six.
Yeah.
So moved?
So moved.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Questions? Everyone clear?
Uh, Mayor, I have a question. I, I have a statement. I'm going back to it. Just so come January, we don't have this issue again. There's no way the city, uh, you said it's hard to do, uh, contacting all the builders. There's no way the city can contact the builders and, and let them know that, you know, they find themselves in the same situation as these gentlemen did today. That we can't contact them and let them know that, you know, if they think they're on the old fees, you know, they need to do something before the, the change happened?
Sure. So typically we do it through the bills, but is there any other suggested ways of contacting?
What about, um, the Central Florida Regional Planning, since they have to go through them anyway to announce their projects? They would have an accurate list of who's.
I mean, we can't have that many builders in Avon Hall, do we?
It's probably a dozen or so, I mean.
Put an application in, in, anyway?
Yeah.
I mean, so we could go back to the applications and just preform a letter and send it out and, hey, we're about to increase the fees.
Jerry, is there any liability on the city's part of, uh, taking any of the open application? So that we have and giving them a note that, hey, the fees will be raised in the future?
I mean, as far as, I don't know, by giving them extra notice, you know, I think you're basically, you know, um.
Inviting all of them to.
Yeah, to come in and reserve capacity, um, for some unknown project, you know, in the future. And it's going to create a, a real problem for, uh, public works. And I, I have something under my section I want to talk about with regard to that too. It's called guaranteed revenues. Because if people could, if, if they're going to start reserving capacity, you know, in advance, then they need to pay for the, the cost of maintaining that capacity if their project doesn't finish within a reasonable amount of time. I mean, we're talking about a project here that started in ninety-five and now it's just finishing up in two thousand twenty-four. You know, if they'd reserved capacity, you would have been sitting on that capacity and maintaining it. That is, there's a lot of expense associated with that with insurance and, and manpower and aeration and electric. And, you know, all the, all those things to maintain that extra capacity, um, that, that you should be compensated for. And it's a very common, um, charge, actually Public Service Commission approves them.
To your point though, then capacity fee might not be the best way to go about that. Because there's, I mean, i.e. Sun and Lakes, there's twenty-six thousand planted lots out there and are they, have they reserved capacity for everyone?
I don't know what they do.
You know, but I, but I. Common that lots would be developed and not necessarily built on right away.
Yeah, that's fine. But if you're going to reserve the capacity, you don't have to reserve it. But if you're going to reserve the capacity, we're not going to sit on it. I mean, I'm going to recommend that we don't sit on it and pay the cost of maintaining that extra twenty thousand gallons of, of capacity on your behalf for twenty years. Yeah, I mean, that's not fair, that's not fair to the ratepayers because they're the ones that are paying it. The people that actually did connect are paying and subsidizing the development in that case.
Right, but you're paying a pretty substantial fee upfront to reserve capacity that you're not going to use. Right? I mean, that would be unlikely to, that you would go into that.
It's not going to be substantial in twenty years. It's going to be low compared, comparatively speaking.
Right, but you paid a fee that you never used.
So when you say reserve, you're talking about reserve and make that payment, or you're talking about just making a statement that you want to reserve it?
You know, you can't reserve without making a payment.
That's right, alright.
It, it, that's to add to this, we do have just the going rate for a, a sewer plant, treatment plant is fifty-five dollars per gallon. So a million gallons, fifty-five million dollars. Plus everything that's downstream or upstream of that plant. And not to mention the water and everything else we have going on. And we're looking at, we, we do the first one, but we set it up in modules. Eventually looking to take it to two million gallons in the future with the amount of pe- things that we have coming in. This place is getting bigger and bigger. We have a ton of people coming up and asking. Not everyone has got, uh, received, uh, letters, but we have plenty of interest. Trying to cut the, the fees of the capacity fees down in half and take it, if, if, if we just said we were at five thousand dollars for average house, five thousand dollars, so six thousand houses more or less what we have right now with our sewer, that's thirty million dollars. We're almost a million gallons with, with, with thir- you know, right now. So it's fifty-five million dollars, not to, not to mention everything else. So it's like, how can we keep driving the rates lower? We're putting it up so we can get a little bit closer and then maybe if we ever have to do a match or something and that's what's available to us, we have, we have money available. So we can do that without having to take on a loan and take on debt. That's the goal. That's why we're trying to build this up now, not trying to say, hey, well, how can we benefit the builders? Well, the, the one that needs to help is that we, we need to start doing projects. And there's, we already had the feasibility study. We're looking at, we're, we're ready to move. But less money is not the answer. We're, I mean, just with what we spent now, isn't, uh, that came through the budget, which was significant, took us down a lot, a, a good amount on our reserves. So this, just keep that in mind.
But it's pretty well agreed upon that we're going to have to get a large grant or something to make this happen. It's not going to come through these fees. This is just a small portion of what you're going to need to.
Yeah, it's really difficult to get a grant for something like this, which is a, um, money-making project, basically. That's the way they perceive it. Um, you know, unless you have damage, hurricane, there's special grant. But we get low cost, low, low cost loans is usually what it costs that, or, um, through the Clean Water Act.
All right. So we have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any other questions about this ordinance as of right now?
I, I just got one other thing. I'm just curious on the model of expense. But we still, uh, Jason, do they still haul in us and we charge to, we're taking in sewer from other places?
Yes. Yep. We're raising that, that fee pretty steeply.
If you're getting that close home, that close home capacity, why wouldn't you cut it up, not paying?
But because of the amount of revenue that it brings in, it subsidizes a pretty considerable portion of our budget. Far more so than the rate that a, a home pays.
So going back to Jerry's comment about, um, if we send out letters to the other builders that are in the area and that's going to make everybody want to try to come in and do this right now. But we could make it fair to everybody because we just gave them the common courtesy of knocking this back a little bit for a whole month until January. So why couldn't we give the others the common courtesy of, hey, by the way, guess what? You're, the rates are about to increase. You're, the rates are about to increase.
Well. No, it's.
I mean, we're going to make it fair to one, we need to make it fair to all.
Yeah, depends on what you want to do for the developers. I mean, um, um, if you want to give them that kind of notice, you know, um, I think it's extraordinary. I've never heard of it happening before, but you know, if, if that's what you want to do, that's what you want to do. If, even with their situation, you know, it's normally the circumstance is it's when you get your CO. You know, and it says that in the agreement, you know, we pay this to reserve it. We're good. We'll reserve your capacity. But you'll, if there's a, if we change the rates later on, then there's a true-up to the new rate. If the homes aren't built on that time, otherwise somebody's going to sit on the, on the capacity. And what I was saying is that, um, in that case, you'll have to get guaranteed revenues and, you know, say, you, you can build these homes in two years. If you don't, that's fine. But your contract's going to require that you pay the minimum charge of so many gallons, so many dollars per, per month for each unit that you've reserved as a guaranteed revenue, because that's the same as the base facility charge that you're already charging the, the, uh, regular customers. That's what they pay for. They pay for the fixed costs associated with that plant. And so why shouldn't the developers pay that fixed cost as well? Because if, if they don't pay it, then your, your ratepayer is going to pay it, and that's not fair.
Who's going to pay it?
The rate, ratepayers like you and, and commissioners and anybody else lives in the city that were paying the rates right now. If, if you don't, if you, you let somebody reserve capacity and stand on it and hold it for a long period of time.
I think though, you're, in a sense, you're villainizing the whole process. Like, in the last four years, we've put fifty-five new homes, actually more than that, seventy-five new homes on the tax rolls in the City of Avon Park. And I'm betting you, between our two subdivisions, I'm betting you nobody else has done that. And these are nice homes, two to four hundred thousand dollars, of which the mileage rate keeps going up every year and you keep charging taxes on. So don't villainize the whole process.
I disagree with your villainizing, uh, statement. Uh, I'm simply telling you the facts the way they are. Um, that, and, and if they don't like the facts, then that's fine. I, I'm not, I don't want to disagree with you. The fact is that if you don't pay it, developers, and I just don't speak to you directly, but you know, if the, if the developers don't pay the cost of holding that capacity, then the ratepayers are.
Yeah, ultimately, if you look all over the City of Avon Park or Sebring or anywhere else, there's vacant lots, right, that exist that have capacity. And that's been that way for the last fifty years. So it's not, not as if that's unusual, right?
No, they don't have capacity unless they reserve it. Not here.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't, I just can't imagine somebody on Winthrop Street going to build a house and you saying, we don't, sorry. It's, I mean, it always has been. I get that we're moving a little closer to the point to where capacity is starting to be a part of the conversation, but it certainly hasn't been.
All right, I, I've, I've, I've seen it before.
Time, move on.
Fair, fair. One last thing. Mr. Jerry, when I said to notify the others, I wasn't talking about preserving. They had to pay before the deadline or they have to pay the, the different rate. That's what I was talking about. We ain't reserving nothing. If we're going to give them that extended time, then I was talking about you paying. You ain't reserving, you paying.
Oh, and I knew that. I'm simply saying, but somebody might want to pay if, if they have a project that they want to try and get capacity for. But, you know, I, I might be borrowing trouble on that regard, and it doesn't, doesn't really, uh, it doesn't matter to me if, what, what you all decide. I just wanted to make you aware of what the consequences could be. Because I've seen it before. I mean, I've been doing this for fifty years.
Sure.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Thank you guys very much for your time.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Any last questions? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Um, this is for the first, yes, yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And you will now, uh, start the process of getting the bills out and everything for the other portion, correct? Okay. Very good. That was the first item. Moving on to the next one. Item number ten, this will be the first reading of ordinance thirteen dash twenty-two four.
An ordinance of the City of Avon Park, Florida, providing for amendments to the city's solid waste collection program, including, including providing for amendments to section eighty-two dash thirty-one definitions, providing for amendments to section eighty-two dash thirty-three, collection by city to modify rates, procedures, and requirements for solid waste service by the city, providing for amendments to section eighty-two dash thirty-four, preparation and placement of materials to be collected to amend and clarify the procedures required of customers in order to obtain a pickup of solid waste, providing for amendments to section eighty-two dash thirty-seven, service charges, administrative rates, rules, rates uh, to, uh, modify, um, commercial service rates, including increases to commercial dumpster rates, providing for codification, repeal of conflicting codes, ordinances and resolutions, providing for servability of provisions, providing for scrubbers errors, and providing an effective date.
All right, Jason, you're up again.
I got this. So the only changes that you're going to see from the, uh, language in the code is a ten percent increase across all container sizes and pickup times. Uh, you're going to realize about a five hundred and sixty thousand dollar per year intake of funds for sanitation. I know that sounds like a lot, but if you look at our budget, we had to transfer in eight hundred and fifty-two thousand, two hundred and forty dollars to make that operation solvent. So you're still looking at a deficit in sanitation of two hundred and ninety-two thousand, two hundred and forty dollars, even with these, this ten percent increase.
Okay.
It's ten percent on the containers for commercial, but then this, the base rate for Avon Park would, would be twenty-two dollars though, right, per home?
Say that again?
It's ten percent for, per dumpster. But as far as for per homeowner, it's going up seven dollars a month, not ten percent, right?
Yes.
Yep. Okay, they do have the option for an additional cart there. You've got all of the bulk debris pickups, got the yard schedule or the tire schedule, white goods, everything. Any questions on these rates?
Uh, the only question I have is on a residential unit, um, where if, um, if their garbage, uh, is stolen, that the homeowner is responsible for it. If somebody else runs over theirs and damages theirs and, and instead of paying to replace it, then they go ahead and accidentally borrow one from somebody down the block, then why would we hold the homeowner responsible when it wasn't his fault that it was stolen, say?
You're talking about if their cart is damaged?
Well, there's two, one thing is, one for damage, there's also one if it's basically, they don't, they don't, it was stolen from the property. I don't think it was stolen from the property that the owner should be responsible for.
I think when we talked about it before, we said basically, how would you prove that unless they called the sheriff's department and filed a report?
Yeah.
That somebody stole their cart? I think is what we had talked about before.
I think you're right. I'm just bringing it up.
That's correct. So if you have a police report, we won't charge you and each dumpster has a, its own serial number tied to your home. And if the guys see it damaged out there, they'll, they'll call in to have it replaced for free.
Um, um, Dr. Kelly, I just want you to know about a month ago, my dumpster was stolen. And I had to call the, um, the police department to get a report. And I asked them, did they know the number to the serial, the serial number to my dumpster? And I was told that, I don't know if I want to put this out here, but Avon Park has lost the data to what dumpster belongs to what home. Because I was in search of my dumpster. I figured somebody rolled it away and I searched for about a week and then I couldn't, you know, hold out anymore. I needed my dumpster. And I called down to the maintenance department and they told me, I said, just tell me what serial number goes to this home for that dumpster. And the young lady that answered the phone told me that we no longer have the data to tie the serial numbers to each home. When they changed the system, they lost it. That's what was told to me. So I could never find my particular dumpster. I got the report and they delivered me another dumpster. So that may be something you want to check.
Okay, I will. Thank you for pointing that out.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion, we approve. I'm number ten, which is, uh, ordinance that thirteen dash twenty-two four, please.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Last call for questions. Seeing none, please call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
No.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Item number eleven, we have a CRA Advisory Board member requesting waiver to apply for CRA facade grant. Ms. Kelly.
I, I'll speak to this because I was the one who received the request. Dana Seventy is a member on the CRA Advisory Board and she is looking to apply for facade grant phones, uh, funds for her business. Uh, last time we had this situation occur, Gerald Snell was the, uh, requestor and it was approved. So we're presenting it to you again um, to give you the same option, whether to choose to approve it or not.
And why she's not here tonight?
I can't speak to that.
This is just approving her submitting the application. So she hasn't submitted the application yet.
She hasn't submitted the application because as a board member, it's a conflict of interest. In order to avoid the conflict of interest, the city council would need to give approval to waive that conflict.
Oh, we, we give an approval tonight just to waive the.
Correct. The facade grant's not up for approval, hasn't been submitted yet.
Okay, any other questions? We have the legal review from the city attorney providing that this is fine to do. Any other questions on this process or on the vote?
Um, I have a comment. Um, you guys remember when I went at Gerald about uh, CRA, uh, requesting for, um, assistance for facade grant? I, I, I personally don't think that CRA Advisory Board or, you know, I know we can't see, um, city council. I just don't think that, uh, we should get in the business of doing that. Um, I would love for Ms. Dana Seventy to be here because I would have liked to ask her, because she sit on the advisory board, how many applications have she turned in in reference to try to get other, uh, other businesses to apply for those grants? And that's my concern. My concern is you want to put your application in for your business, but what have you done to get other businesses to put their applications in? Or, or residential? And, and you know, it, if you haven't, if you're not out there, you're sitting on advisory board of the CRA and you're not out there trying to, you know, help people with these applications, but yet still you come before the council and you present your application. That's the, that's the problem I have.
Okay, but she, she, she's a business owner on Main Street and why should, just because she volunteers her time to sit on the CRA board, why should she be chastised just because she does sit on the board? Would it be any different if she didn't?
That if she didn't sit?
If she didn't sit on the board, it would be no problem.
Of course, it would, it wouldn't be no problem. But because she sits on the CRA Advisory Board, um, I just don't think that we should get into the business of allowing the, the advisory board to be able to apply for those applications because I just don't think it looked good for, we're worrying about ourselves. Because we sit on the board and we think that because we know each other, we can get approval from each other because we sit on the board.
I mean, I, nobody sitting here obviously can make the moral determinations for someone else. So I guess the only real question is for Jerry is can this board set the parameters? Um, in other words, can we change our CRA plan that advisory members cannot apply for grants?
I, I would just advise that if you don't want to do it, just don't approve them anymore. I mean, that's what your perspective is. Um, the Ethics Commission allows, and the rules to, for this waiver, but it doesn't apply to, uh, planning zoning boards. But it does apply to these types of subsidiary boards and, um, so I mean, if you don't want to do it, I, I just, you can make them aware of the fact that you're not going to do it, but I wouldn't make it a rule.
Okay, it's just up to the individual council members how they feel.
Well, I'll make just one comment. I, uh, applied for a facade grant, uh, several years ago. Uh, I was up for election for the city council and, uh, my house is a hundred and ten years old today. And, uh, one of the answers was that since you're running for city council, you won't qualify. So you're basically just trying to get a facade grant in case you, before you get possibly elected. So I was denied. Just a comment.
Now that, now that didn't make sense to me. If you wasn't on this advisory board or this, or the city council, you should have been approved. That's, that's how I feel. Just because you was running, that doesn't mean that that throws you out of the race.
I was going to get elected, but I did. But you're right.
There are aspects, I, I don't know, shooting from the hip here, whether that one applies or not, but there are aspects of the, the ethics code that apply to people that are candidates. I don't know if this one is that, that or not, you know, just shooting from the hip, but.
The bottom line answer was I wasn't within the, uh, area of Main Street, so I didn't qualify anyway, so.
There you go.
I feel like as long as it's not, you know, as long as there's paperwork and, and there's a paper trail to support every little penny that's spent, then I, I just, I don't see a problem with it.
And here's the issue. You guys approved Gerald, so how can you deny hers?
That doesn't set a precedent.
Huh?
Doesn't set a precedent.
I know it don't, but you know what it'd look like?
Yeah, but you, you can't turn it on, turn it off. That, that's, that's the point you're making. I agree with that. You can't say, well, we're going to do it for this person, but not for that one. Because then you start to get into problems. So if you're going to do it, make sure it's solid. And that's what you want to do for a long time. Um, and then, uh, um, but like I said, the Ethics Commission is pretty, they're pretty strong as far as, uh, the ethics issues and they allow this. So, you know, they didn't feel like it was a problem.
Well, a question I have for you then, Jerry, what's the difference between an elected official and a volunteer on a board?
Um, well, you guys are considered, uh, ripe, uh, reporting individuals and, or procuring employees. In your case, you're reporting individuals because you do a report on your, um, um, at the end of the year.
So, so a volunteer.
You're, you're, you have a, a more ethics, uh, issues apply to you than, than a volunteer. A volunteer may, may, no, nothing may apply to them, but because they've been made um, part of the city through their appointment.
Okay.
They now fit that, that the Ethics Commission rules in that regard.
But the business facade grant is, are they all matching or just those rental ones?
Um, it's just the rentals.
I mean, I would, I would have a problem with it. I feel like if the CRA Advisory Board was denying everybody else but, and then just saving it for themselves, if, if that was how it was appearing, but it doesn't, it seems like they've been pretty lenient and generous as far as what they are approving and we've kind of had to put the brakes on certain ones. So I don't feel like it's that type of a situation.
And, and just, I mean, I understand what you're saying. I'll just simply also point out, they don't prove anything. You guys ultimately prove, they're just making a recommendation. And, uh, so they've got no authority. That's why they're, they're not in a position that, where they can't be waived. So it can be waived for that reason. In the case of the planning zoning board, their recommendation has a lot more emphasis. So they, they, um, that's why they don't allow it for that.
And just because we are allowing the application does not mean we are approving. We still have to see what the actual application looks like.
Absolutely, absolutely. It just allows her to apply.
Right.
Well, I'll go ahead and make a motion then to approve D eleven for the waiver. Um, for the, uh, CRA facade grant.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Any last questions? Seeing none, please call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
No.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. All right, item number twelve, we have a fam lease, general aviation office space.
Yes, thank you. Uh, this item is to conceptually approve the terms of the lease with, um, the city and Two Fly Inc. Uh, they are a flight school out of Merritt Island. They currently operate there. They've been there some thirty years, I think. It's a two hundred students and about seventy-five employees. The terms of the lease would initially be a one-year lease that would go month.
The terms of the lease would initially be a one-year lease that would go month to month until they found a larger facility to move their operation into on the airfield. It would be seven hundred and fifty dollars a month and it's approximately four hundred and two square feet. So if you could approve the terms of the lease, and in addition to that, I have a letter here from Ag Flying Services that does lease a much larger hangar, and they are willing to enter into a buyout agreement with the flight school. So if you're willing to accept these terms, we would hammer out all the minutia of the agreements. I just didn't want to spend a lot of time and money on consultants if this wasn't something that you would be interested in entertaining.
And, and by approving the terms, you're not really approving the, the lease. It's not binding on you. It's just sort of, you know, okay, if you've got a real problem with something here, you need to let us know because we need to, you know, change it. Because we've been working on changes already and, um, um, we have it pretty, we think pretty close, but it hasn't been submitted to them yet, um, with the changes. And so we'd like to kind of get your approval of that, was it, what was in your package anyway? Because it's, it's actually been changed since then.
And we have JT Clark is here also.
I have, I have a question for you, Dr. Kelly. Uh, I don't mind so much the one-year, uh, contract for the office space. My biggest concern is a multi-year contract for them actually running the business at the airport. I don't want to see them come in and stay there for a year or two because it's a global company and inside they find a better place to get up and move. So I recommend, I don't have a problem with the lease of the office. I think we should go forward that one hundred percent. But I do recommend that in the future, when it comes down to, uh, giving them a agreement to, uh, actually run the business at the airport that they have a extended long lease.
So to answer that concern, uh, the actual hangar lease for the Ag Flying Services would be for a much longer term.
Okay, then I'm happy with it.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns?
I just want to point out that when, when you do approve this, it'll be signed by them already and they'll come to you ready for approval.
JT, is there anything else you'd like to give an overview on?
No, just a question for, uh, Mr. Bird. Would you like to prepare the buyout agreement? Or would you like us to do that? Or do you all want to be a party to that? I do know that we both have the same council in Orlando, so, but I would prefer, if you don't have any problems, to draft that up.
Yeah, no, it's fine. If you want to submit something to us and to review, and I'll probably have Nick look, look it over as well. Probably have to, you know, because it is airport centric. So I want to make sure that they, we pick up all those issues because we've already, he's already picked up one issue I wasn't aware of, which is fact that it's got to be an RFP and things like that. And that's, there's an exhibit for federal, uh, um, under the federal laws that was required to be attached that he attached to this.
Okay.
The other question I have for you, Jerry, what about the existing, uh, flight school? Have we approved everything out there for them?
I, I don't know that we have. I know we taught, we taught, we've started working on a land lease, but I don't know where we are on that.
Uh, we currently have the flight school lease outstanding, uh, which is my flight academy, which is not Two Fly, uh, and then the pool building. Uh, we have a ground lease and renovation repair for part of Aviation Florida, uh, that we need to get sorted out hopefully over the next couple of weeks and present to y'all at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I have a question for JT or maybe, uh, Dr. Kelly. What is the date? What is the estimate date that they're planning on moving? Did they say?
Uh, immediately. So they've already rented ten homes, uh, at, uh, the development by the college, Chris Millers, uh, but there's still, it's going to take some time for them to move all two hundred students, um, because of housing situations, um, but they, and also too, it can take the FAA up to eight months to approve a part one forty-one certificate transfer. So the immediate need for the office space lease is so the FAA can start their process. But Mike can attest, he signed them up in Merritt Island over sixteen years ago and, uh, they were good tenants as far as I know.
Uh, yeah, Mr. Mayor, um, a one forty-one school is a professional pilot path. So these students will come and probably be located in this area for up to two years where they go through never stepping foot in aircraft, all the way up to becoming a flight instructor and build time. So this is significant with regard to economic development, the indirect and induced impacts for the good folks in the great city of Avon Park. And like I said, I worked with the gentleman for, uh, sixteen years. He, uh, was at a previous airport for twenty, and that's one of the main reasons they're simply allowing him to move or call it a satellite for one forty-one. They never ever do this, but the gentleman has over thirty-six years, uh, you know, no accidents. He runs a top-notch facility. He used to run the FBO at, uh, one of my airports, and he also has a one thirty-five charter operations with three citations. So, uh, we could bring a lot of activity to the airport, fuel sales, uh, good all the way around, good economic development.
You said, you said you, he was bringing students here. Are they enrolling students, uh, locally once they get here or no?
Well, well, there's two different things. Um, he has, uh, born students. It takes a lot longer. The, the reason he needs the office space is so that he can say, I have an address where I want to move to. So he can start that process so the FAA will allow him to move over and start his operations. He would only be allowed to, um, train domestic students currently while he works on securing a, uh, full-size facility. And he plans on making a significant investment in that building. He would need at least two months to renovate the, uh, the hangar that the other business is going to vacate before he would open it up for operations. So he's going to constantly be swollen up probably over the next two years, uh, to get up to that total number that he has. But he has about forty aircraft. They probably, uh, use about two thousand gallons of fuel a day. So it would be a significant, uh, boost for us at the airport.
So why did they choose Avon Park? I'm glad they did, but you know, they could have chose Sebring.
We're special. I need to know, Mike, we're special.
Because I'm your favorite airport guy. I'm the guy that secured him and stole him from another airport, uh, about seventeen years ago.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I, I love this. I, I did. And, and if you don't mind, I have to go ahead and make a motion that we go ahead and approve the agreement between Two Fly Inc. and the city of Avon Park for the office space.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions?
I'm sorry to interrupt the motion. The contracting entity may be their parent or sister company, Airborne Systems, Inc. So, but it's the same entity, same ownership.
Okay. Jim, does that change your motion at all?
Not at all.
Okay. Does that change your second?
No.
Okay. All right, last call for questions. Seeing none, please call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Looking forward to it.
Thank you, council. Still with a perfect record here.
Hey.
Right on.
Good to see you, Michael.
I'm number thirteen. We have two new employee classifications. Ms. Kelly?
Yes, in evaluating staff, the first couple of weeks here, it became abundantly clear that we have two positions that have zero backup and it's a little scary. Um, we don't have anyone backing up the human resources department. She also does all of our risk management. She keeps us out of trouble, keeps us out of jail. I'd like to have somebody backing her up. And again, with our information technology person, he's able to work off-site thankfully and be remote when he can't be in the office, but nobody knows what he does. Um, I couldn't do what he does if something goes down. So, uh, you can see the job descriptions and the salary scales for those positions. I did calculate the, um, fully weighted hourly when I gave you the estimate of a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and thirty thousand dollars for the two positions, uh, per year. Should be noted that fifty-five thousand dollars is being saved on what was budgeted for the city manager's position. We also have a dozen unfilled, but actively recruiting positions right now. So the longer it takes those twelve to, um, get filled, we can have that delta, that difference also and save that money and apply it towards these two positions. So effectively, at the end of the year, we shouldn't see much hit to the budget by adding these two positions is my bottom line.
Okay. Questions?
Dr. Kelly, are you going to be promoting within or this is going to be outside her for these two positions? Something I forgot to ask.
Sure. So they, each position will be, uh, recruited internally for ten days. And if there's not somebody adequate to fill, then it'll be opened up to the general population.
Okay, but, but as of right now, you don't have nobody in mind that you.
Uh, it depends. We might. We might have some applicants.
Okay.
I have one question for Dr. Kelly and that's on the, uh, starting job salary.
Yes.
Uh, uh, the two salaries are, that you are showing on the rates are, are less than the hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and thirty-five. So are you leaving it open that we could actually hire them at a, a, a larger pay scale, which would then come close to paying what with the existing, uh, tech is making now? So we have to increase his pay?
No, so the hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and thirty thousand is the fully weighted salary of each position. So that includes all of their benefits, their retirement, uh, that we have to pay into it. So even though it says it's forty-five thousand to the, the cost to the city is probably closer to sixty, sixty-five. So that's, that's the difference.
So the IT tech, uh, number one, then his salary would be approximately what, ten thousand dollars under what Matt's making now per year? Who's been here two years?
I, I don't know what Matt is making off the top of my head.
Uh, currently the IT administrator is at, with the new rates that went into effect, ten one sixty-five thousand eight hundred and seventeen.
Okay, so we're offering the, the new hiring starting rate at fifty-five, that should be about ten thousand less than the matchmaking? Okay. Just want to make sure. Thank you.
I just had one question on, uh, the education for the human resources assistant. Do you not think that we need to have it be at least an AA or, or higher? If they're going to be doing those type of job duties?
You know, I can answer that, yes. Um, when you start bringing in degrees, the salary is going to go up. Um, my main focus point, and I, I have no problem training from within. I think that's great to do that because then you, you know what you're working with. Um, but the, the initial, um, component that needs assistance is the onboarding. And you don't really need a degree for that. Um, you can do onboarding if you'd had that experience before. That's recruitment, background checks, you know, uh, advertisements. Take it right up to bringing the person onboard.
Okay.
And we have twelve open positions right now. That's a huge piece of it.
Okay. So should you be out and this assistant has to make a decision or play your role in your absence? You think somebody with two years of experience and no degree and no, nothing to that effect, making forty-five thousand, which is the same amount almost that one of our twenty-year-old, twenty-year employees make?
Mm-hmm.
Um, that's going to be sufficient? We're going to be able to cover that in case that person makes a bad call because they don't know any better?
Yeah, keep, keep in mind that all hiring and firing decisions and disciplinary decisions come from the city manager, not from HR. So this person would be responsible for being able to file work comp claim, you know, do, do the more generalist items.
And did we get a human resources assistant job description from any other city around?
No, I went with my, my knowledge of twenty-five plus years in HR.
I, I'd kind of like to see a job description for the other cities too, for that, this position.
Um, um, this question is for Ms. Denise. This, Ms. Denise, I'm a little concerned about the, um, the pay for a manager and a staff, ten thousand dollars difference. Is, is that about right?
For, for that particular job, yes. For IT engineer, yes.
Okay.
And, and Matt is, his title is an administrator, IT administrator, but he would be supervising that person.
Which the IT, um, information says forty-five to fifty, so that's fifteen to twenty thousand difference in salary.
Fifteen to twenty.
Any other questions?
Oh, I think that's fair.
So Denise, before you got here, I, I think I'd actually have to ask Chrissy, who, who did the role when Denise wasn't here?
In terms of backup or the actual?
Yes.
There was no backup.
So who did the payroll?
That's all done through finance.
Okay, so Melody basically.
Melody's in her team. So she, they.
So should we?
She would be able to explain it better, but they do have a structure to where now HR does play an important role because they submit certain documentation, they change certain, certain things in the system. It's going to adjust, you know, when we have rate increases, things like that. So it, it's a lot more complicated in, in terms of, you know, the two departments have to work together to make it work on time.
Did Denise, um, I'm sorry, did Mark play a role at all in Denise's position before we filled it?
Not that I'm aware of.
Uh, I mean, I would say yes. I, I would say the city manager plays a very, a huge role in HR. Um, anytime that Denise is not here, I mean, there, everybody's going to be looking to the city manager for that. And furthermore, beyond that, all the department heads, if one of their guys gets hurt, first person they're going to talk to is their supervisor, you know, so. Any other questions?
And you said this position is budgeted?
It's not officially budgeted.
It's not officially budgeted? No, but in analyzing the open positions that we have and the money that was saved on the city manager's position, it, it appears that we can cover almost all of it. It just depends on how fast those twelve people are on-boarded.
So the other positions that you're needed, are you going to come back later to the council? Not necessarily you, I'm saying administration, um, and request those to be filled at, uh, still?
The other twelve?
Well, the other positions that are still vacant.
Yeah, they're being actively recruited right now.
Yeah, so the obvious concern is the, what happens next year, right? If those positions are filled, where are we going to get the, the extra money and is it worth these positions to do that? So I guess that's, that's what we're looking for from you is to justify it ongoing, not necessarily this year.
I see.
Do, do you really need it, I guess is the question.
Yes.
Okay. You have your answer. Any other questions?
So when we take a vote, are we going to vote on these separately? The information technology engineer and then the human resources assistant?
It sounds like you're going to have a problem with one. So sure, let's take them separately.
Okay, let's do.
Okay. So the first one.
I'm, go ahead. I make a motion to go ahead and approve the IT, uh, position.
Okay, sounds like we're starting with IT. We have a motion to approve the IT.
Second.
We have a second for that. Any other questions? Seeing none, please call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, well, we'll be looking for a motion for the, um, assistant.
I'll make a motion to approve a assistant HR person because I think that's very important, especially when there's, uh, critical problems within the city, employees or staff that, uh, we definitely need to have somebody here at all times. And, uh, you can't blame somebody for taking a vacation or being out sick. Uh, HR is a very important position that, uh, if we don't have somebody in place, we could hold up somebody's, uh, situation for, uh, up to two weeks, I guess. So I make a motion to approve that.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Questions?
I guess my only question is just, is there anybody else? I know we, we, uh, you know, raised Liz up to her current position. Is there anybody that we could, in order to save that money, kind of cross-train across two different areas? Or do you feel like everybody's at their max and this is what we need to be able to function properly?
That's, that's a really good question. So without divulging personnel issues at a public meeting, uh, there, there is some discussions about moving people internally into that position. I can't say for sure that that's going to happen and not get a foul of our legal guru here.
So if.
Yeah, prepare. We didn't talk about it. We don't need to.
But just hypothetically, if that were to happen, does that mean that that person, what they currently made and what their current title was, would kind of be able to go away so that we weren't having to double spend or?
It is possible, yes.
So, so what, so if we just perhaps going to move somebody into that position, Dr. Kelly, can we not move them into that position at the current pay that they're at? To me, to me, that's just me now. And I'm not saying Denise that what you do is not important. It just seems to me, that, that's quite a lot for an assistant, you know? It's just, to me, that's what it seemed like. I don't mind the position itself. You know, we need to fill the position, let's fill it. I just think the amount that we're, you're asking for is kind of a lot for that position. Because if you get stuff, you know, if, if. you know, if, if, if you're the type of person that come in and do the work and do the work, at some point, it levels off. And it is, you know, y- you don't have to constantly be, you know, behind, you're there. And you know, as long as you keep yourself at a steady pace, you're there. It's not like you constantly playing catch-up in that position, a- at least that's how I see it. I mean, I've been in administrative field for forty-five years and, and administrative, administrative, administrative. And I just think that if you, you all, you keep yourself right there, i- it's not a lot of work to be done for the position that, for the amount that is being asked for that position. Like I said, it's not that we, I'm not, I'm denying the position, I'm just, I mean, I'm shaky grounds with the amount that you want to give for that position, the pay you want to give for that position.
I think what Councilmember Mc, uh, McGuire has suggested would address your concern there if they're wearing multiple hats in that position, that, that might alleviate your concerns.
Yeah, I like that idea.
So Ms. Kelly, are, are you still ready to continue with this, or would you like more time?
Uh, I'm ready, if you want to vote on it or?
All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any further questions?
Oh, sure.
Seeing none, please call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
No.
Councilmember Taylor?
No.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Along the grains, Maria Sutherland, nine hundred West Main, along the grains of hiring from within, um, did you consider perhaps, and I know the vote's already been made to do it, so the position's already open, but if you transferred someone from the inside, that would be an out-of-classification pay of a dollar an hour for someone to be trained internally for a certain period of time to see whether they buy it and they like it, and then perhaps give them the upgrade. But the job description that you have is, um, if you look at Polk County, that's a coordinator position that requires a four-year degree. That's entry level for four-year degree with five years of experience. And right here, you're creating a job for a high school diploma with two years of onboarding. And if there's someone inside of the city already with familiarity of onboarding, I don't know who that is, but you said that you would train. So technically, they won't have that experience because who has been doing that work already? So, you know, there's, from the public's perspective, there's a little confusion on the necessity of hiring someone with that level of pay, especially in this competitive market, um, that's a coordinator position.
Okay. All right, so regular updates from city manager.
Yes, thank you. Uh, at the September twenty-third council meeting, the council approved a, um, a shutdown of the road for Avon Park High School's homecoming parade. Obviously because of Milton last week, it was canceled. They would like to have that, um, rescheduled for this Thursday, the seventeenth. I'd like to know if that, uh, is acceptable to you all. The police and fire have already reviewed it and it's fine with them.
Is anyone opposed to that change?
No, sir.
I'm not opposed, but what time was it between seven, five or four, you know?
I don't have that, I'm sorry. I, I can email you.
All right. And it was Thursday?
Correct.
I believe it's five o'clock. Okay, we need a motion for that?
Yes.
Okay, we looking for a motion for that change for the homecoming?
So move.
Back it.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions? Seeing none, please call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Ms. Kelly?
Yeah, the county will have its disaster debris hauling contractor make one pass through the entire county, uh, starting the week of October twenty-first, so if all of the residents can put their debris out at the right of way in front of their house. I don't have the exact timing yet for Avon Park, they're still working that out, but they're definitely going to start the week of the twenty-first.
Are there any other parameters or any other guidance that we need to do?
It doesn't need to be separated.
Yes, if you could set, have it separated, absolutely.
So Dr. Kelly, you said they're going to start on the twenty-first, but you're going to let us know what date, when they're going to reach Avon Park?
Yeah, we don't, we don't have the map yet of which area they're going to start in. They're going to figure that out within the next week.
So they're going to start in Highlands County on the twenty-first?
Right, right.
They may start in Avon Park, they may start in Lake Placid, who knows?
Exactly.
Did it?
They, they did not, okay. I, I just want to note that the boil water notice is still in effect. I know there's been some s- concern from the community about being notified adequately for that. Uh, you may recall at your September twenty-third meeting, you approved the Go Gov notification contract. We were supposed to have the implementation meeting last week that obviously didn't happen. That would have been an excellent means to get information out. Uh, we do have our implementation meeting tomorrow. Um, I do want to note that there, the notifications are only as good as how many people want to sign up for the service. We have a service like that now on our website. I think it's, it's Civic. Civic Plus or something like that, yeah, Civic Plus. If you go to our website, you can sign up. I signed up for it when I was just interviewing and researching the city. And I got my boil water notification for Avon Park at seven fourteen in the morning on ten-ten. So it was definitely out there and I, I apologize for those of you who did not receive it. Um, lastly, I'd like to thank Chief Marcy and his team and Jason Atkinson and Public Works for all their hard work last week and over the weekend, getting everything cleaned up and trying to get us functioning again to a reasonable rate. And they did an awesome job, all of them, thank you.
Whoever was able to get the generator going, to get water pumping.
Yes.
You're awesome.
Yeah, awesome.
That concludes my report.
So I've got one question there before you close out, um.
We've got some signups.
Um, Dr. Kelly, the, the reason, help me out with this, the reason why the city is not going to pick up because it was a storm and that belongs to the county responsibility?
Yes, they have a disaster, uh, debris contract that they get reimbursed for through FEMA. So I'd rather spend their money than ours.
So that means we're not going to run the claw truck at all?
We've, um, we, we originally started because there were, there was a minimal, there wasn't that much debris out. And then just the debris, the debris kept gathering. We originally had a phone call. I spoke with, uh, Bob from the Solid Waste for the County. And everyone had the same opinion. It wasn't as bad, very minimal C and D, except for the, the, the park that got hit, the trailer park, I guess, that got hit out in, in Lake Placid. Uh, very minimal, uh, debris, but then, as you can see, it just kept coming and we were picking up areas and then it would, when we, the next day, there would be more debris exactly where we picked up. And it basically, there was a, a phone call, Bob reached out to me and said, uh, you know, reports were coming in that it's getting much bigger than what we thought. And, um, you know, that they, they were going to bring in their debris management contractor to take a look at it. So I, I concurred, we looked at it, I spoke to the manager about it and end up they called the meeting today, which we both attended, and it was pretty good news. It seems like everyone's on board. The, the majority of it is all, all to landscaping debris. We do have a little bit of C and D where some people were, they're putting out, you know, whether it's the beds and whatnot, but we, we were, we've been trying. Like today, we went to try to pick up areas where furniture was out prior to the storm, so areas that we knew were prior to, or we didn't want them just sit out there waiting for, uh, FEMA or whoever, or the county to come and, and pick that up. We wanted to be proactive, let's go out there and go get that. And the, you know, hopefully the, the landscaping debris gets taken care of soon. They identified a debris management site up off, uh, the truck route, so by the range out there. So there was one, that's not our landscaping debris site, it's a different area, but yeah.
So that's a yes or a no, the clam trucks going to?
The clam trucks is running, but it's not going to be picking up, um, it's not going to be picking up, uh, yard debris. Cause it's going to get picked up by, anything that we pick up, we're going to pay for, out of our pocket. We're not getting reimbursed for it.
Okay, so if the county truck comes by, they start in Lake Placid because obviously they were hit the worst. How, are we talking two months, three months, or we just don't?
Well, if they start on the twenty-first, I, I calculated, we, they got to sit there for thirty-eight days? Uh, that's my concern. We, we talk about our city here. I, I get it. We want them to pay for it, I get that, but if they're going to start on the twenty-first, just start. We ain't going to say when they get to us. We're talking thirty-eight days? They got to sit there for thirty-eight days on the side of the road?
And, and not to mention if another storm comes this way and then we're going to have to pick it all up.
I just have one question for you, Jason, if you don't mind.
I'm saying you got what, about sixteen left here? And then they're going to start on the twenty-first next month? Or just the twenty-first of this month?
This month.
Oh, geez.
Yeah.
So this month.
This month.
Jason.
Of this month.
Then now, if we, if it was just our two guys with the, with the grapple truck, it would take us a long, a pretty, a, a large amount of time. Plus, we would incur that expense where they're going to come in, get it out of there. If we, if we need to pick, get ISOs or get something that's hazard or something that along the line, we can do that. So we, we kind of focus on that and try to get our, our parks back up to speed. Our right of way, you know, Main Street and areas like that, uh, US twenty, so even FDOT is involved in it too.
Has there ever been a consideration to get a second, uh, type of a truck to do that job for the city? They have two of them, so one.
We have two already. We have two, we have two of those trucks there.
Okay, operating?
Yes, yes, we have two grapple trucks.
Thank you.
I have a comment. So our next meeting is October twenty-eighth. I should definitely have a schedule of when they would be in Avon Park. If it's not acceptable at that time, we can discuss it. And you can let us know if you want us to just go ahead and pick it up.
One question.
That work for you?
Yes, that's a good, yeah.
One question I would have for them is if the city does, uh, let's say conglomerate it and put it in one pile somewhere, would they still pick up that debris?
Because I am seeing that. They're, they're putting.
And the reason why I say that is just that if there is some areas that you have to pick up regardless, instead of us paying to dispose of it, if we put it somewhere on our.
Especially the ones that were, that are like covering up the sidewalks and stuff like that.
Yeah, something that's a danger to the public.
So during our meeting today, their consultant with Tetra Tech was talking about that, having community large piles. They were doing something similar in, um, Sun and Lake. So I think the issue is that they have to come out and document first so that they can report to FEMA that yes, this is legitimate debris from multiple locations within the jurisdiction. And so that they can get reversed, reimbursed. So, yeah, we can definitely ask them that question. I don't know if they've been through Avon Park yet and documented, but I'll find that out.
And so Jason, for the regular, um, household pickup, that schedule hasn't changed?
No, it hasn't. You, you just had the modification from the storm, so it just got pushed back one day for the storm, but now we're, we're, uh, Monday, we're picked up today and then Tuesday. So it's the Monday, Thursday route and Tuesday, Friday route.
All right, anything else on the storm stuff? Seeing now, we got some signups. First one is Maria Sutherland's. Give your name and address for the record, please.
Maria Sutherland, nine hundred West Main. This dovetails on the conversation that you just had.
Okay.
Would it be feasible for residents to go to the landfill and, uh, dispose of our own branches and, and yard landscape debris? Um, we have a corner lot next to us and people are tending to just dump everything there because it's an empty lot. But we don't object. We have a trailer. I'm more than happy with my husband and one of our workers to go there and just load it up on a trailer and take it to the landfill. Is that feasible for residents to do that and get that out of the way and then?
Are you suggesting that the landfill would let you dump it for?
Well, don't we have a landfill for refuse like that?
No, not, it's not operating at this time for that, no.
We contracted, to, for, to clarify, we contracted with another landfill, the, the old Albritton pit out there.
Yeah.
They accept the yard debris. It was cheaper for us to dump it there than it was to have a man at our own facility.
So but even then, we wouldn't be able to take it if we wanted to, if we contacted?
You can take it out there. Anybody can take it out there if you're paying for it.
Okay.
Something I was hoping the county would do is allow us to dump the yard debris at the landfill for free if it's storm debris. And then that way, everybody could take care of their own messes and then things would undoubtedly get taken care of a lot quicker.
So did the landfill itself that we used to have, did the permit run out? Is that why we don't have it anymore or?
No, it's, it's just not manned and there has to be someone there to.
Thought we had somebody that manned it. We had a landfill operator.
Right, but it was far cheaper to contract with the other landfill than it was to have that man because of the equipment they needed and all the.
Okay, I didn't know that. All right, thank you.
I, I do want to add that the county is addressing whether or not they're going to waive tipping fees tomorrow at their board meeting.
Push them to do it, please.
And it was free, but they, they opened the window for a, a certain amount of time, let's say a week or two weeks. And you had to get it in at that time.
Yeah, I'll know more tomorrow. I'll watch their meeting and let you know.
And it's usually exclusively.
Yard debris, yeah.
And make sure it's covered because they will.
As a whole separate issue right there.
Get a ticket.
All right, next one, we have, um. Yeah, we, we got to go through the official signups first. Uh, Jana Cersey. Yeah, we'll, we'll have to get you up here to the microphone though. We have to have a record. Just give your name and address for the record, please.
South Nicholas Drive, Avon Park, at Crystal Lake Community.
Yes, ma'am.
Just, I wanted to interject while you're on this subject. Um, I have a friend who's out of state, I call my weather girl.
Okay.
She gave me information texting to me when she was able and when I was able. That Governor DeSantis gave out information called Get Hope with a one, eight, three, three number that you can call them, give them what you need and they will come personally to your property and take it for free with all the yardage. If you had some, uh, stuff from the hurricane, put it in a garbage can, put it together with the, you know, the lawn stuff because they know that this area basically has been the biggest problem that we had was with landscaping. So.
You said it was called Get Hope?
Get Hope.
And you don't have the full number in front of you?
Yes, I have. The number that was given out was one, eight, three, 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 eight, four, six, seven, three, and it is free. F R E E, free.
Okay.
Pick it up. That should take some of the pressure off of you all.
And can you repeat that number again?
Some missing number.
One, eight, three, 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 four, three, eight, four, six, seven, three. Private homes. I don't know about calling if they would help with certain cities. Only know about private homes. They're there to help.
Did you get it?
I did.
Problems that you need to show, who to take care of it. They will give you the name and phone number that are most likely is going to work for free. They will let me know and call that.
Oh, no.
All right, if I could add.
All means, we, we appreciate it.
I'd like to add that I actually called that number and that's exactly what they did. They, they asked me what situations you may need. And they said they would send out volunteers to take care of those issues for you and for free. And they said it would take about a week. So they would contact you first and say exactly what do you need? You tell them what you need and they would try to get a group rather come out and schedule that down. Like if you have a down huge tree limb that the power company cut out the part on the street, but didn't cut up the part on your yard, they'll come out and they'll cut that piece up on your yard for you and go ahead and remove it for free, as well as clean up any other yard waste. So she's absolutely right. That offer is available. I contacted them already. They still will call me in a week and they'll tell me what I need and they'll take care of it free, volunteers.
So maybe that's something we could put on our social media page or our website.
Just call the number, make sure it's the right number first.
Yes.
All right. We have Jana Cersey. Let's give your name and address for the record in the microphone, please.
Hi, my name is Jana Cersey. My address is thirty-three eleven Dolphin Drive and I am a resident of Highlands County in Sebring.
Um, if you could pull that microphone towards you a little bit.
So I actually have, uh, the PIO Karen Clarkston from the, the Highlands County, uh, Board of County Commissioners. Um, texting her right now to see if we can get some answers on the
Okay.
debris, so maybe she'll, uh, message me before we end this. Also, Don Elwell, being that he's the commissioner for my area, so maybe they'll answer, um, while we're in here.
Excellent.
But I'm actually in here just to ask, um, not. But I'm actually in here just to ask, um, not, I don't know if it's permission or not, but maybe just an invitation um, to have our um, to invite for a town hall meeting for the candidates that are up for city council. Um, to have a town hall debate that I did, um, maybe you guys are familiar. I am the admin and creator to Happening Events in Highlands County, Florida. Um, that's my page. Um, and I held one back in August, August seventh for the sheriff and for the supervisor of the, I'm sorry, the.
Supervisor of election?
The superintendents, uh, the school board superintendents and also the district two and three. Um, so I did have a panel of all eight, uh, candidates up at one time um, with Dawn Elwell as my moderator, um, and also Dan. So the D and D, uh, show was up there. Uh, they did my moderation. I did go live for that. Um, I had about ten thousand people in attendance. Um, and there was a little over twenty two thousand people that was viewing at one time. Um, so I wanted to invite our city council um, that were going up for election, um, for this, this term here, uh, which would include Louis Bates Senior, uh, Brittany McGuire, Shelley McCare, JJ Moore, Maria Sutherland, Bernice Taylor and Terrence Wills. Um, the date that we have set, if they're available, would be for October twenty first um, at around six PM to roughly eight or depending on time at the college, six hundred West College Drive in Avon Park. And we usually hold those types of things in the auditorium and it's the University Center Auditorium, which is the closest auditorium to the whole area. It's not the Wildstein Auditorium. Um, so it's just kind of an idea and a an outlook, a more of a point of view where each candidate can kind of explain themselves on a more of a, a live platform. Um, we've noticed that something like that gives each candidate um, a sense of more of an explanation of who they are, where they come from and to be able to, you know, give their point of views out on a, a platform. Um, as of right now, I do have about forty five thousand followers on my page. I do go live on that. Um, so I feel like that each one of them can kind of uh, give an idea of what they, you know, what they're about and, and give theirself a good idea. Um, my date happens to be a little strategic, um, because right before, um, early voting. So it's just something that I wanted to get an invite. Um, I spoke to some of the ladies up here, um, Dr. Kelly and Chrissy, um, to get the email to be able to invite them personally. Um, so it was something that I wanted to share with you guys to also let them know that it would be something public.
Yep.
So it's a public invitation.
Good. Yeah, so I just simply say that, um, um, Ethics Commission has, you know, said it's okay for, um, commissioners and I assume there'll be at least two commissioners running, running for office. Um, if those, those council people, um, are, do this, um, you have to be careful not to enter to into any debate because then that gets close to, um, and could be a violation of Sunshine Act. So I mean, stake, stay in your, your, uh, position and everything like that is one thing, but point, counterpoint, you have to stay away from. I, I would strongly encourage you to, to read the, um, um, Florida's Government and the Sunshine Manual regarding, there's a very good section on that, um, particular topic. Um, they call it candidates forums on that, or if you're gonna participate.
Ms. Cersey, I don't know if, I don't, I don't know if you've been brought up to it, but the, the twenty second, October twenty second, I know you said your event, you wanted it on the twenty first. Um, Highlands Today is actually doing their forum on the twenty second. I didn't know if maybe you wanted to.
Ours is the twenty first.
Right, and theirs is gonna be on the twenty second. So I didn't know if maybe you wanted to piggyback with them, if that's something you're interested in. I just wanted to bring that information to you.
Well, the date that we have here was the date available that, um, Dawn and Dawn Elwell and myself were able to collaborate with.
Okay.
So that was, we tried, we tried, we tried to kind of put it all together, but
Okay.
that was the only, uh, timeframe that we had to work together. Um, they don't necessarily do a live. I think theirs is more of like an interview. So
Okay.
it kind of worked out for us to do it this way. Um, so the twenty first was available for uh, uh, County Commissioner Dawn Elwell and myself, uh, for the twenty first. I don't know where they're actually holding theirs. Um, but, um, the South Florida State College, uh, Mr. Flowers usually allows us to use the auditorium there. Um, he sets up the, uh, auditorium in this type setting here. Um, where each person does have a mic and able to speak on with a timer. We, uh, each candidate does have a timer uh, as, as such.
Okay.
So.
Very good. Thank you.
All right. And if I do get that, um, text back from Commissioner Elwell or the PIO Karen, and I'll give you guys that information as well.
Please do.
All right, thank you.
All right. And last, uh, Ms. Rayburn, did you have something else you'd like to speak on? Okay. Just again, give your name and address for the record, please.
Oh, you wanted again?
Yes, please.
Okay. Nancy Rayburn, twenty seven thirty nine South Nicholas Drive, Avon Park, Florida. I've been a Florida resident since nineteen fifty as a child. So I am a Floridian. I've been here seventeen years now in the area, been coming up here to Highlands County since I was in high school and younger. So I know the area. Attorney uncle, had property down on Lake June. My mother and father lived in Leisure Lakes.
Mm hmm.
Uh, have an uncle that was in Sun and Lake. So it's not like I'm a stranger to Florida and hurricane items that we need to know about that I noticed here because we don't have a local TV station.
Hmm.
I was listening to the radio because I gave up the dish seventeen months not to even watch the TV and listen to the radio, which there was about that much information on the radio when FM station that's local was one oh five point seven that we could have had. The library, even last year, I picked up some of their folders that they had made up with the hurricane map and hurricane information. But if the people that live here now and come into town during the winter season, they don't go to the library. So we don't have enough local stuff and I didn't even know that I was gonna talk about it, but it's very important. Some of the stuff is just remarks and ideas that as you all were talking that I jotted down. Sometimes it's hard for me to read my own writing, so I'm gonna go quickly because the time now I looked is, it's after eight o'clock. So I know everybody wants to leave. Um, I'm going backwards to the last thing, item that was talked about because I know the biggest concern right now for the city is bond. We need money. We need grants. We need different things. I accidentally sat in a little bit on the meeting that you had that was closed, which I'm sorry, and you, nobody jumped up to kick me out. So I stayed and I, and I listened. Um, I know we need money and revenue and the, the amount of building that's going on now we need, but all the stuff that you all talked about that I've never discussed, never been a part of. I have worked for, uh, developers in Coral Springs. The developer that took over all the property from Westinghouse, which was also WCI, Westinghouse Community, Inc., which then became Watermark Community, Inc. So they stayed with those same WCI. So people knew who they were. They were with the Prudential Real Estate Offices. They had fifty throughout the state of Florida. They're one of the biggest. I don't know what their count is now or if they've sold some or if they are still the fifty. I also worked new home site for two years with WCI Jensen Beach Country Club. So I'm not unfamiliar with what goes on from selling to a new buyer from the ground up. And I've worked for the, those are one of the biggest builders. Regency Homes in Broward County, when I was in Coral Springs, that's Broward County, is that I worked for Regency Homes. Again, the biggest builder. What you've, what I learned today with the amount of homes that are coming in and coming into Avon Park, I drive around, I haven't done real estate now because I've had two hips replaced and many other little problems, but I still want to keep my finger. I still have a license inactive. I'm not working with a developer and I'm not working with a real estate company.
What do we need?
Okay, so right now, because knowing recently I went out to the Sebring Airport. I would have thought that I was in a different county because of all the changes had been made. And that airport, my understanding is that it's been for smaller private planes and for smaller, like, uh, with different companies that have like the twenty four seater where they can fly into an area like this. The Avon Park, there is like no comparison. I haven't been there, but I'm saying that no comparison between the two because for Highlands County, that Sebring Airport has already graduated to something that we need to continue to grow to bring more revenue to come into the county with people to come out of town. Fishing, golfing are the two biggest determinations to bring people into this area. The first thing that gave me chills, and I'm getting chills now, was for seven hundred and fifty dollars a month for rent for a hangar in Avon Park for.
It was for office space. There was a four hundred, a four hundred square foot office they're renting.
Okay, what we're, we're gonna get it for the
With the extra finger?
For the hangers.
What, eight grand or something like that?
Okay, well.
So, don't know the exact number.
I'll just put it this way, seven hundred and fifty a month gives you nine thousand dollars revenue. So if you're getting eight, I'm just passing that along because I wanted to write it down so I could discuss it. But my dis- disgust is we all know what happened on nine eleven and we all saw it on TV. And where did most, well, they came from schools here in Florida. We don't need, I don't believe, maybe for revenue, but for the security of this county and what the growth is going on. I was in Coral Springs, lived in Port St. Lucie, so I know both areas, but we don't, I, I'm just giving you my personal feeling. I don't believe we need two schools to go on in this area. And like AARP, the just for information, because we have so many of us that are over sixty five that live here all throughout Highlands County. We all know that. But the people that were flying those planes were in Florida going to a school. I don't remember which city it was. It was either Sarasota, Fort Myers, somewhere in that area. Where supposedly they get information. Two of them were living in a rental in Coral Springs, going to the bars, information about going down to Hollywood in the bars with the girls, which was part of, not part of their religion. And to bring in to what we're trying to build a nice city, better schools that bring people in that want to come to this area.
Mm hmm.
It would scare me to death to know that we would be doing that because those that were doing the, they got licenses to be able to drive those airplanes.
Yep.
And knowing that, that should scare anyone. And if we could prevent that because we're looking for more money, I think we need to protect more lives. That's my opinion.
Understood.
Um.
So we are running short on time.
Okay, I'm going briefly. Some things are just some suggestions that when I, when you didn't kick me out before.
Go ahead.
Okay, I had a question about with the, the first thing that you all discussed with any of the vacant homes that are out there. If you're not in the city of Avon Park, then you're doing new construction. People come in and they're putting in wells and septic tanks. They move into their home. When the city is ready to go to these homes in the future.
Mm hmm.
They have to be aware, and maybe you all may not be aware that you need to put into, well, I had to, as a Realtor, to be able to put into your sales contract that when they bought in Port St. Lucie, I was on a well and a septic tank, is that when the city was ready to come in to bring your water and sewer into that area.
Mm hmm.
That buyer had to be made aware and sign it in part of the contract. We had great offices where attorneys came in when radon was bothering everybody. And had the people come in so that we knew as people out there selling homes that people have to know about.
We do that with our developer agreements.
Okay. Um. Okay, so I've already done that one. And I was able to read it a little bit. Okay, um, the other thing that kind of hit a chord with me is like when you didn't kick me out, is that with the bonds and the grants, my sister who was running and president of Fort Lauderdale Board of Realtors and Hollywood, I know that they, she was writing for the bond and for the grant. So I asked her, I said, because everyone seems to be working remotely and the concern that you all had was now hiring somebody new and adding on another salary. She's not interested, but it crossed my mind that if there are businesses or, I don't know, I just asked the question because I thought that would save Avon Park money if someone was working remotely and you're just paying them for the hours that they put in
Mm hmm.
writing the grant or the bond for you. Um, I don't know. I mean, if I was home, I would be researching, but
Sure.
up to you guys to do. I just, it just hit my brain that maybe that's something to save money.
Mm hmm.
No, no medical insurance, no retirement and nothing. Just write the grant.
Yep. Now, we, we've used similar firms in the past, yeah.
The young man that was here and the, I guess it's his father. Um, you were asking about the capacity.
Mm hmm.
Well, he's got plans. He's got architectural drawings of where the units are going to be for a two bedroom, two bath and for a three bedroom, two bath, so that you can estimate both of those information of what the capacity would be because he wasn't totally sure. He's got an architectural drawing or have him bring it in from the architect so you can see it's right there and then it won't be able to be changed. He'll know definitely what he's getting.
Mm hmm.
That out of the way. Uh, Sun and Lake, as far as I know, they still have their own water plant.
They do.
Okay, and I don't know if they're on sewer or septic tank there.
Water and sewer they have.
They're, okay, because I only stayed in my uncle's place during one of the hurricanes.
Mm hmm.
Um, okay. And the question that you all were discussing about the CRA with people, the lady that's with the.
Advisory board, yeah.
Was a volunteer, but then she doesn't get paid.
Mm hmm.
But it's common sense that there has to be a happy medium because if you totally throw this lady out, what are you gonna do to get any volunteers to help? So you have to kind of really think about how you're going to treat them because you don't want to lose any volunteers that we have, I think, anywhere because a lot of part of, of the city and the county depends on volunteers.
Mm hmm.
Okay, that's dumb. And then this is not that bad.
Anything else you come up with, you're more than welcome to send an email to each and every one of us.
Have an email. We have a cell phone and that's it.
We do have phone numbers as well. We do have phone numbers as well.
Yep, the phone numbers. I'm getting rid of AARP Consumer Cellular because I've had nothing but problems.
We've got to wrap it up though.
Okay, so basically I think the highlights that I wanted you to hear from me. Even the last thing can be personal. Again, that was another idea for me is that. That's why I told you about where I'm from, where I work and the developers that I've worked for. Because we're growing, the city doesn't have. Not a bad reputation, but the other two areas people were heading to Sebring, down to Lake Placid because they have a lot of rules and regulations. Stores, no movies, no this, the bowling alley was demolished. But we're growing and that's making a change that has to be to go from, you don't want to move to Avon Park. The fact that all up and down Main Street, you can see the changes there. Jackaranda Hotel brings in a number of people. And. We're lucky that because there's so much land. And there was another question, but it's just popped in. It's not a question. It's when. The young gentleman that was here was asking about all the building out in Sunning Lake. All you have to do is go into the Broward County Tax Row. Or when the paper comes out with all the people that haven't paid their tax bills, that's because when our VITA came in here, they did fly and buy. And brought South American people into the area and a majority of the land that's still available that's out there, those people are dead. Or been contacted to families and now you can get a, pay their taxes and be able to own a piece of property out in Sunning Lake. Okay, thank you. I really appreciate it. I'm talking as fast as I can, scribbled as fast as I could.
We appreciate it.
Thank you for calling.
All right, is there anything else to the good of the city?
I just have one thing, please. I brought this up.
Just one more thing.
Just one more. I've brought this up many times and I hope my city manager is listening about having generators, not only at the community center. But also at this building here. Not only do we have to have a service for our citizens, a place to go when they're out of electricity, have a place to cool down. A place to have Wi Fi for their, charging their cell phones or even laptops. I think this is imperative that we need to work in this direction in the very near future. And one other consideration about having generators in this building, the community center is. Hurricane season doesn't end to end in November. So like this year, if we had a hurricane in a few weeks when it's election time. And we don't have power at this building or a community center, where are we going to be able to vote? So I think the hope made this very, very clear to everybody here tonight, anybody listening. We need generators at these two locations next year. And we can do it without cooling off or lighting up the whole buildings. You can just do part of the community center just so that's workable and serviceable. I brought this up year after year after year. This is a proven year. We almost had the worst hurricane ever. And we almost lost, we lost electricity tonight. So I'm pleased to ask everybody to consider that next year. We move forward getting generators for this building and a community center to serve our people in the community. Thank you very much. I'm done.
Anything else to the good of the city?
Nope.
Yes, ma'am. Give your name and address at the microphone. Quickly as humanly possible.
So Jana Cersei, thirty three eleven Dolphin Drive from.
Yes, ma'am.
From Dawn Elwell. He said nothing's been declared or decided yet. He believes that they'll be talking about it tomorrow at their meeting for the debris from the county picking up. Hurricane debris only. He said that nothing has been talked about. To be announced over any city, Sebring, Avon Park or Lake Placid. So he said that they'll be in a briefing tomorrow.
Perfect.
All right.
All right, anything else to the good of the city? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
To adjourn, please.
Seeing no opposition, we are adjourned.
Thank you.